At, I said 6:33 already, and in attendance is myself, Diane Buco.
Ben Timman.
Deirdre Parati.
Gary Cheeseman.
Gary Cheeseman, awesome. And we are going to start today with any public input. Any participants wishing to address the Select Board during public comments may do so in person or via Zoom. Speakers must identify themselves by name and street address. Anybody on Zoom interested in chatting?
No one on Zoom.
Anybody in the audience? The audience is shaking their head, no. Observing today, thank you.
I'm told it's the best practice for the Select Board. I'm the FinCom Chair.
Excellent.
So fun. Happy to have you. Don't bring so many people with you next time. Okay, we'll move right into reports and announcements and start with Steve.
All right, a couple of traffic announcements today. But I got an update from the police chief on the spill down by Wenham Lake. So that was a Casella truck had a major spill of trash and debris. So the large debris fell and also some liquid that was spilling out of it. So, you know, requirements by the state and also Casella internal policy. Before you can touch it, they have to send their reps out to inspect. The state comes out to inspect certain materials they have to put down to absorb the spill. You know, make the determination whether it was any type of biohazard or contaminants. There was none, so then they could proceed to do the cleanup. The whole incident took about somewhere between three and a half to four hours from when it took place until it was cleaned up and the traffic was flowing again.
So no impact to the lake?
No impact to the lake, no, it's just trash. They were, it's not just trash, but they were able to pick all that up. There was no like oil spills or hydraulic fluid like we had down there. That requires a more substantial cleanup. And we had an accident on 97 coming in from Topsfield into Wenham where there was a crash and a Good Samaritan stopped, a pretty significant crash. Good Samaritan stopped and administered lifesaving techniques on the individual until police and fire were able there and then they took over. It was ambulance to Beverly Hospital where they continued to perform the lifesaving measures, but unfortunately he passed away. And they're unsure of the cause of death, whether it was the accident related or the accident was related to. And then the other update we have is Harbor Light Homes. So we have appearing seven now individuals from Wenham that have got in on the program or submitted their information. Additionally, there's been some changes with the preferences. I've been, you know, don't worry, none of the preferences impact any of the units that are set aside for Wenham residents. These impact the additional units. And due to that, they had to change the deadline. So the deadline now is September 18th for submission of the applicant, application to get into the housing and the lottery date is now October 18th.
I think if I might interrupt, there are seven eligible applicants completed their application from Wenham and there's one additional one that's in the process. So I think there were 30 open spots for Wenham Lottery, but.
Yeah, 32 open spots.
Thirty-two, so. If anyone's still interested, it's a good time to jump in.
Because it's a once and only chance to add the Wenham preference.
And above and beyond that, they have over 120 applications.
Yeah, you're right.
So it's a popular thing.
So the Police Secretary, so I know we have been kind of brief updates as times gone on, but we're not going to be able to remove the position from the Union. However, we have come to an agreement that we can reclassify the position. So the ability to allow us to compensate for the unique skillset for public safety, especially administrator, and due to the sense of material that they deal with on a daily basis. So, you know, that's a good compromise. It came at a good time because we just got, well, I just got an email today from the consultant that they are no longer able to provide the coverage for that office, at least in the frequency that they have in the past. The individual who was assigned to our account will be no longer with the company anymore. She's moving on to another opportunity. And they essentially just don't have the staff to backfill. So we'll be down to about once, it used to be once a week, now it'll be down to about once a month. So with that said, we're now moving forward. We'll be posting ASAP probably tomorrow to the Mass Municipal Job Board to get that up there for two-week posting and essentially make it opening competitive with the new job description.
Can we also advertise it on the website?
Oh, definitely, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, it'll definitely be on the website and social media is a good idea.
And. You know, we have the FinCom Chair here with us, but they met last week and provided a lot of good insight on the investment policy statements. So I have forwarded that to Belinda to address some of the concerns or have Bartholomew address any of the concerns and bring them back to the Select Board to essentially talk them through and see if it's something you want more information on or make any changes, things of that nature.
And so going forward, when we do that yearly, right, we would have Bartholomew, we would send it right to the FinCom perhaps just to review before we finalize it. So instead of going backwards that one step.
Yeah, and I think, you know, this is sort of a heavy lift in this year because it hasn't been updated in many years. And once we get to a statement that everybody is on board with, I think the changes from year to year will be very minor.
Minimal changes, but as long as you stay on it every year.
Exactly, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, and the FinCom, appreciate it.
Appreciate the involvement. And if you have someone that has reviewed IPS, has enhanced another condition, it's great.
Great, thank you.
And that is all I have for updates this evening.
Oh, that would be me. So I was going to mention Harbor Light, thank you very much. The master plan technical sessions, I'm going to leave that for you, Deirdre. Will you review that?
Sure.
I want to welcome everyone to the school season, like my favorite time of year. Hope everybody else is having fun with that. The signs, I've noticed that there's a lot of changes in the signs in town. There's a lot less when you're coming in to Wenham from Hamilton. Very few huge flags, although there's some new signs. Anyone's noticed Facebook and Google Ads, that's what the sign says on 97. Both sides of 97, and the Handyman is back.
He's back?
He's back, the Handyman signs are back. Coming from over 128 by Gordon and also right at the edge of Beverly in Wenham on 97. Just on that first telephone pole in Wenham, he's got it on both sides. So I don't know, but I think it's better. I don't see many in this area, so I appreciate that. I haven't heard any other.
I know Rich has been sending out letters.
Yeah.
I don't know, he's been on top of it.
So just as if any residents see anything they don't like, just to let the TA's office know and they'll tell the building inspector. I know that we've talked about this, but I wanted just to open it up to the, all committees, boards, and commissions that the Select Board, I think, would like to hear from you if you have any information or just want to share what you're doing with us and the amazing amount of residents that are watching us. It would be a good time. I'd like to recommend that maybe the committees and boards that still have openings come to the Select Board. So I'm thinking CPC, Council on Aging, Cultural Council, Human Rights, Open Space, WISH, and ZBA all have openings. So it would be a great time for someone from that committee to come to a Select Board meeting and just to talk about what they do. That might help. And then the Topsfield Fair is coming. So as your trustee, I have the sign that we'll post and I have brochures that I put on the counter. And then I just wanted to check in with everybody's special projects. Hi Pete. Gary was working on the charges for all the boards and committees?
Yes, so have all the current information, although the origin documents are a bit elusive still. So we're going through the old Select Board minutes and searching the basement to an extent. But we're getting there.
But you're getting there, awesome, thank you very much. Because then the goal with that would be not to have a document, but each.
Yeah, for each committee, board to have a set of the original documents establishing that organization and then to update the charges if needed. Some have not been addressed in probably decades.
Right, and then some even have bylaws that aren't, you know, WISH has bylaws, Council on Aging has bylaws, they should be right down at one time. Thank you. And I think, Ben, you're working on the website, you guys have a meeting scheduled?
Not scheduled yet, but we're going to, yes. It'll be this month.
And Deirdre, you had a green initiative that you were going to bring to us?
Yes, I think tentatively for the 19th.
The 19th, awesome. Pete, you were going to be working on the communication. You're cooking?
Yeah, Steve, Joe and I've met a couple of times and I was away for five days. So we'll probably take a look at that this week.
Yeah, we were talking about the changes.
I'm looking forward to hearing. I think that's everything from me.
So we think sometime in October that we might show it?
Oh, you might bring it to a board?
Certainly have a draft that can be shown.
Right.
An idea in October, one of the first meeting, second meeting?
Hopefully the first.
First, 10/10. It's written down now.
Just went and ripped off other towns' policies.
That's nice, it's always a sharing game. Ben, you have anything to share today?
I do not.
Deirdre, do you have anything to share today?
Sure, I just want to echo what Diane said. Congratulations to the schools for welcoming all the kids back today for first day of school in the district. It was fun to see all the kids waiting for the bus and, you know, there was a lot of excitement in my own house. So congratulations to everybody in the district, the teachers, administration, parents, and children alike. So it was a good day, I would say. The Children's Business Fair, as we talked about last time, is going to be happening on Saturday, September 23rd. And I know they've extended the deadline just a bit. If you have a child that you know of who's creative and would like to start a business or sell crafts and so forth, the deadline was extended until this Friday, September 8th at 5:00 PM, so there's still time to get involved and the event will be on the 23rd.
You know, just the other day, a father and his two kids came into my office in Manchester and said that they have some businesses. I make jewelry and this one does, I can't remember what the other one did. And they wanted to see if they could set up some sort of fair. And I said, oh, have you ever heard of the Children's Fair? It's a national thing. I pulled up the website, told them all about Wenham and the kids were so excited. So it's a really good thing for young kids.
It's very fun and encourage everybody to come out and support these young business people. And as Diane mentioned, the Master Plan Committee, we're in the throes of planning the technical sessions, which will take place September 27th and 28th of this month, so in a few weeks. And invitations have gone out. They are open for the public to observe if people are interested. And the vision goals and draft strategies are all posted to the website and are open for comments and will be open for comments for some time. So when people have an opportunity, take a look and let us know what you think.
Workshops at the museum, is it, the two workshops?
Mostly at the Wenham Museum in Burnham Hall, yes. Thank you.
Gary?
Yes, this Thursday at the COA at 9:00 AM. Cherry Fontaine from our Assessors Office will be answering questions and speaking about deferments, abatements, tax write-off, and all those questions. So good opportunity to come in to the COA and get your questions answered before tax season arrives.
That's great. Pete, anything to share?
Yeah, we had, last week, we had a really good meeting of the, I'm going to get this name completely wrong. The Elementary School Building Committee.
That's right.
And we had a great presentation by the contractor. We agreed to sign their contract, which is like 580K. But they presented a couple of images of like, this is probably exactly wrong, but this is what it could look like. And they, one of them, they made this, so if this is Cutler. Cutler, you got Little Fields over here? They basically built a new Cutler there, but they made it look like townhouses. So it blends in with the residential area.
Wow.
So anyway, we talked about, at the beginning, before they showed that, we talked about, you know, how they're trying to engage the community. I was like, oh boy, that's going to be really hard. But then after they showed these images, well, they're more than happy to show. People are going to go, oh, and you get people engaging because they're going to like, I hate that, I love that. So I think we're all very excited about it and we're switching to monthly meetings now.
What were you doing before? Very few.
Probably met four times.
So more consistently now.
And so now we're, yeah, we're just going to try and knock this thing out.
How many people are on the committee?
Depends on how many people show up. There's supposed to be about 18 and I think Eric commented that for the people who are consistently not showing up, he's going to replace them with people who are going to show up.
Now it's going to get busy.
Yeah.
That's great. Okay. We are on to correspondence, which we have none, and to new business. We have an appointment to make for the Historic District. Lisa A. Bennecke, that's not you. Bennecke or Bennecke, I'm not quite sure how to say her name. Is she here?
Bennecke, I believe.
She is not.
Not here, but she's interested in being on the Historic District Commission.
This is a reappointment.
It's a reappointment, she's already on there?
Yes.
Well, she had stepped down and then she agreed to come back.
Come back.
If we needed her.
So it's actually a new appointment. If she was off and coming back on, is it a new term? Or is she refilling her term?
New term.
It's a new term, three-year term? So it's a new appointment. But it was great to see her resume, really cool lady, lots of experience. Anybody have questions, comments, or concerns, or do we want to go with a motion? Nope, she's.
I move to appoint Lisa A. Bennecke.
Bennecke.
To the Historic District Commission for a term beginning September 5th, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Any other comments? Let's vote. Pete?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Deirdre?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Diane? Yes, that's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much for coming back, Lisa. And we have Jessie Palm, our Regional Social Worker, to update us on current initiatives and to just introduce herself. Hi, welcome.
Thank you for inviting me here.
Thank you for coming.
Nice to be here. So I just wanted to come by and kind of introduce who I am and what it is I'm doing. So I'm Jessie Palm. I'm the Regional Social Worker with the Eastern Essex Regional Public Health Coalition, which is a public health excellence grant that serves Hamilton, Wenham, Essex, and Rockport. And I'm a licensed independent clinical social worker. And my role is pretty much to come into the community, see what sort of resources we already have, what we're utilizing, what the needs are of the community, and kind of work to network and build on what we already have and help establish some new things that may be helpful for the community. Within Wenham, I've been working with the Senior Center. You guys have a great Senior Center over there and Jim's been great, kind of meeting some of the seniors and identifying some needs. It's definitely clear that there's an aging population in town that is very independent and likes where they live. And I think there's some kind of challenges with helping them be able to stay in their homes as long as they can and getting them connected to what they need. Also hoping to bring back some more programming to Enon Village. I know a lot of that kind of was shut down when COVID came. So hoping to bring some stuff back partnering with Senior Care and the Senior Center as well as Paula over at Housing. And working with the police is something else that I'll be doing. As you're probably aware, Wenham doesn't participate or hasn't historically participated in the co-response program that Beverly has with having clinicians respond to mental health crises or substance crises. So that's something that I am able to work with the police on too. If they respond to a call that there's some mental health issues going on or it's noticed that there's something lacking in the home, whether it's unstable housing or food inequities or something, you know, they can reach out to me and I can follow up with them as well. I've been offering some office hours for anyone to come in. Right now, it's in this community, it's actually at the library. So I'm over in Hamilton. The second and fourth Tuesday of the month for a couple hours in the morning. I'd love to bring something to Wenham if there's a space or a time that you think that would be helpful. I think that's kind of a broad brush of some things I've been doing. I'm happy to answer any questions or hear any concerns or thoughts.
May I state where your office is?
Yep, so I'm in, I'm based out of Hamilton, up above the Senior Center in with the Department of Health, Health Department over there.
And I think the other day when you were at the COA, you talked about your work with the schools as well?
Yes, thank you, yep. So I do meet with the school, last year I met pretty much monthly with the school counselors over there. I attend their clinical meeting, have a close relationship with the School Resource Officer too. Really trying to help bridge that gap between school and home. As we know, you know, when kids come into the school, they go home at the end of the day. So making sure the families have what they need. I think the school tries really hard to provide that too, but there's just some things that they're not, don't have the capabilities to do because their hours kind of end with school. So I do have more flexibility to go in and help families with that as well.
All the schools, Hamilton, even the.
The district. Yeah, so I pretty much know the counselors in each school and the nurses too. Actually, the whole district trained their nurses and school counselors in overdose response and prevention and did a Narcan training for them. They all attended last Tuesday, which was great to have them there and participate. And I'd love to bring more of that to the schools as well, to kind of connecting the schools with some additional outside resources that could come in and offer trainings for teachers, staff, students, families. I work pretty closely with the Youth Prevention Network. They're based out of Gloucester. Hamilton and Wenham don't, they're not actually part of that, but because I'm part of communities that am part of that, I'm just going to, you know, why not mirror that here as well? And they're cosponsoring a program in Ipswich, actually I brought a bunch of flyers, on the 20th, I believe, helping parents understand phone and technologies and how to help their kids with that and kind of navigate that. So I'm hoping to bring more opportunities like that. And the idea too with regionalization is, you know, we're all small communities and we don't have the resources to do these larger things that we'd like to do to bring it to the community, but kind of by sharing this, you know, it'll be in Ipswich in September, you know, maybe Essex will host something in November and maybe Hamilton-Wenham will host the next one, kind of work together.
Do you have any sort of asks for us, Jessie? Kind of like anything on your wish list?
Don't be afraid to share my name or throw out my cards. I think, or talk about what I do too, which I know is kind of vague with the information I just shared. But so often I come across people, even well-intentioned people in the schools on various police forces that say, you know, I didn't know there was a resource like that. Like they'll talk about a family that needs something and, you know, well, why didn't we connect them to bootstraps? Or why didn't we call action to help with, you know, heating costs? Oh, I didn't know that that was an option. So if you ever hear anyone say, you know, they're not aware of something, I'm not saying I have a magic wand or I have the answer to everything, but certainly don't hesitate to reach out or say, you know, give Jessie a call because maybe there is something. And if it's something that we're consistently identifying that we could use that we don't have an answer to, then maybe we need to find a solution for that. You know, that would be an area of focus.
So the flyer that you have here that says Wellness Takes a Community, where you explain what the Eastern Essex Regional Public Health Coalition is with Wenham on it. It explains it really well. I'm happy to read it in just a second, but maybe we could do that, but put your contact on that?
Sure.
Could we do that for Wenham people? Because that's what we could post and that would.
Yeah, so I'm happy to share too my, which I think I also included in that, the flyer for office hours, which does have my direct information. And I'm happy to leave a bunch of business cards for you guys as well.
Business cards would be great, especially maybe like in the town clerk's office?
Yeah.
That come in a lot.
And something I'm working on for Hamilton that I'm happy to duplicate here too is they send out like a welcome packet for when people come into the community. The town clerk puts together like a little information packet. I have a little flyer that I can stick in that too. So if that's something that would be helpful for here.
She's working, she's updating the welcome to Wenham packet? It would be a perfect time to add this to it. But so just so that everyone can hear, the Eastern Essex Regional Public Health Coalition, the EERPHC, yeah, was formed by an agreement between Hamilton, Wenham, Essex, and Rockport and exists to improve the ability of local health departments to meet the state legislated requirements for public health services with an eye towards health and racial equity, efficiency, and partnership. The EERPHC staff consisting of a regional social worker and a regional public health nurse. So you're the regional social worker, our regional public health nurse is?
She recently left. We're in the process of hiring another one.
Right, okay.
No.
Assess and help provide needed public health, nursing, mental health, education, and support and social services in the community, as well as work to increase health inspection capacity. The EERPHC partners with established organizations and trusted agencies to connect our communities and residents in a more robust way. Residents are welcome to reach out directly to the organization or to Jessie for support, which is, that's just, that encompasses a lot. I think it's really huge, especially since everybody's in their own little bubble now. It would be good to know that you're there.
The most important thing I think that I've learned from, so I've been doing this, I think I started October last year, yeah, so about almost a year, is everyone is doing really great work and really cares about their neighbors and what's going on and really wants to help, but we're all focused on whatever avenue that is. If we're police, we're focused on policing. We're in the COA, we're focused on our seniors. And really I see kind of, I have this larger lens that can say, you know, maybe there's something that's working with the seniors that we can implement with younger folks and really collaborating, working together. Also to speak on not having a public health nurse, we definitely miss, or I definitely miss Rachel. I went from two to one. But I do have a great relationship with all of our public health nurses in the town. I know we only have Mary Beth for, what, five hours a week here or something, but I'm happy to.
She fills up a lot of time.
I know, I'm happy to collaborate with anything they're working on. You know, I don't have my nursing license, but I have experience working in, within a hospital and I've worked side-by-side nurses my whole life. So I'm able to do different types of social assessments and pushing any programs they have or helping out with flu clinics, whatever. I can't actually do an injection, but I'm happy to direct traffic or, you know, do whatever promotion needs to happen.
That's great, anybody have any more stuff? You have a question, certainly, Joe.
Just wondering if your services are also offered to town employees as well? Just out of curiosity.
That came up today and that's something I've always, everywhere I've worked, I've also kind of included that as part of what I do and I'd be happy to speak to anyone. I know sometimes just having another person bounce something off of or someone that's not affiliated with your department or a coworker or someone that you're going to run into, and I'm happy to do that too. Please share my information with them and happy to kind of connect them to services in the community or whether it's getting connected with the Employee Assistance Program or they've tried that and it's not working for them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good question, very nice. So you also have, so this other, the next program that you're having is on Wednesday, September 20th. That's at the Ipswich High School. All about social media?
Yep, it's around phones, like social media and phones, how to protect your kids, kind of what to know about, you know, different apps that you may be seeing or not seeing or. The gentleman that's speaking is one of the, apparently the nation's experts on ever-changing social media and kids. So I think it'll be a worthwhile presentation. They're also offering free childcare, including dinner. So I know it's sometimes at a tough time to get out at night, but.
It's a great idea.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Super. Thank you so much for coming.
Of course, I'm happy to.
Really appreciate it for being here, all this stuff.
I'll leave some stuff too and, you know, any, don't hesitate to reach out with questions. That's why I'm here, that's why you guys have me.
We appreciate it, I think that's a great organization. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I think I saw Margaret's face.
She's up there.
Yeah, she's going to provide an update on affordable housing. Yeah, she's gonna provide an update on our Affordable Housing Trust.
Hello, can you see me and hear me?
We can, both.
Oh, great. Oh, now I can see myself twice. This is a little weird. Okay, so, I know, I'm here for a couple of different things. I wanted to give you an update on the Affordable Housing Trust, and what they're doing now. And then we have another specific item that we wanted to discuss with the Select Board from the Affordable Housing Trust. So, why don't I just start with what the Affordable Housing Trust's been doing in the past months? Right now, they're working mostly on the possible purchase of an affordable unit on Dexter Lane. And that's the, what I'll be talking to you about later, and I'll have more information on that. But the board, the trust has been meeting, they met like three times in August, just to discuss this one particular issue. But other than that, they're working on, they're helping to promote the Maple Woods applications, and they've gone to the COA, to a couple of events there, just trying to promote Maple Woods. They're also talking about the possibility of recommending some updates to the zoning bylaws. They're investigating accessory dwelling units by right, which I know is, a lot of people have been hearing about. I think Salem recently did that. And it's something that the state is not pushing, but they're making it easier for communities to adopt regulations that allow ADUs by right. They're also talking about helping to promote an inclusionary zoning bylaw, so that whenever development is, development comes through the planning board, or whatever, that if it's a development over a certain number of units, there will be a requirement to create affordable units.
Excuse me, Margaret, is that already in our bylaws?
No.
Okay.
So, does, we have, we do have something in our bylaws for flexible development, and there are bonuses if you do create affordable units. But inclusionary zoning would be an across-the-board bylaw that says, if you're doing a development over a certain number of units, whatever kind it is, there are requirements for affordable trust, affordable units. They're also looking into some possible programs to use trust funds to assist residents in Wenham, maybe with, how, you know, if they need help staying in their homes with maintenance, or updates. So, they are looking into possible programs that would help assist people. They're looking at aging homes, you know, there, we've done a little bit of research on some of the aging homes in Wenham, and some of that are owned by seniors, and whether there's possibilities for the trust to help those people. There are also, we've been in contact, well, through Steve Houlos, about the Cherry Street property, which is owned by the state. It doesn't seem to be utilized right now, and we've been talking about it for years, and trying to get the state to talk to us about it, what the possibilities are for it. And we're also starting to monitor all of the units, the affordable units in town, and the deed riders, and determine whether the deed riders are, might need some kind of updates. We did have one situation where we realized an affordable unit was being foreclosed on, and we realized that the deed rider that maintains its affordability may not survive a foreclosure. So, we're starting to look at some of the deed riders and say, you know, "Is there any tweaking that we might be able to do?" I think that's about it. They've been working a lot, like I say, on this other Dexter Lane project that I would like to go into a little more depth on, if you, if you want me to do that. Or if you have questions, please let me know.
Anybody have any questions? Deidre?
Yeah, Margaret, thank you. Could you just elaborate a little bit on the Cherry Street property? So, it's, it's, the state is not basically responding? And is there a recourse for that? Like, what's the situation?
Yeah, I guess...
Yeah, Steve might have a little more information. I know, Steve, you may have talked to someone at the state. I don't know how recently...
Yeah, I reached out to D.C. M. three times. So, most recently, three emails.
No, what's D.C.?
Department of Capital Asset Management. So, they would be the ones responsible for that property. And, so I've sent three emails, the most recent one being probably three weeks ago or so, when we last talked, Margaret. And still no response to the third email. So, at this point, I think it's probably time I look into a way to escalate it, although I'm not sure who you would escalate it to at the state, because they're kind of the deciding body. But, a little bit more research on my end.
Because they used to run it as, kind of like a halfway house? And then there was an accident, I don't remember, it was a fire, or whatnot? But then they closed it down. I would think that at this point, the last time we had contacted with the state on this house was through Senator Bruce Tar.
Yeah, probably, it's probably a good idea.
You turn on to Cherry, and it's right there on your right. Twenty-four Cherry.
No, it's further down.
Up close.
I think it's number twenty-four.
Across from Cedar, twenty-four.
So, I think, I think maybe...
It's a good idea, I can still bring him in, one of his aides, and see if they can't get a, get a response for us.
Because it's been years now.
Yeah, it has been.
Yeah, it's a waste.
Been vacant for a long time.
To have it idle. Any other question? Let's hear about Dexter Lane.
Great, I'm not sure whether you have the memo that we sent from Huntley Skinner about the purchase of Two Way Dexter Lane? So, Dexter Lane came to the attention of the trust, probably in 2018. We heard that the unit was being foreclosed on. And there is a process for all of this, when it involves an affordable unit. The town should be notified before anything happens. Well, it came to light that this unit was refinanced, I think in 2004, and that was done almost illegally. The bank that refinanced it never went through the proper channels, and the town was never notified. So, when you refinanced, the town should have been notified. So, fast forward, this bank that had refinanced the unit kept trying to foreclose, but DH, what was known as DHCD, kind of stepped in and said, "Yeah, wait a minute, we don't think you can do this." So, the bank's been continuing to try to process this foreclosure. The Affordable Housing Trust stepped in at least six or eight months ago. And the trust has determined that if this unit were to go to foreclosure, we most likely would lose it from our subsidized housing inventory. So, the trust has been talking about purchasing it, and how we can do that. If you recall, in 2020, the trust purchased a unit on Stockwell, Stockwell Drive, over at the Parsons Hill Development. And the trust purchased it, and then now they rent that out to someone who qualifies for affordable housing. So, I think the trust is hoping to do the same, the same with this unit on Dexter Lane. The, there's been a lot of back and forth with town council, with the bank, with the owners. The owner of the property is certainly involved in all of this. So, the, the, the bank has kind of been dragging their feet. So, the trust has decided to move forward with the purchase and sale. Before they can do that, they have to come up with the, the price that they, the house can sell for, because there's a maximum resale price. That maximum resale price is determined by the fair market value, and there's, I think it's thirty-eight percent, thirty-eight point six percent of the fair market value. In order to get the fair market value, we have to have an appraisal done. So, the trust is asking the Select Board to authorize the release of approximately $600 to do an appraisal. We have contacted an appraiser. Steve Ozechowski is a local appraiser. He is familiar with the property, and he's very familiar with the town of Wenham. So, our first request is to release $600 of Affordable Housing Trust funds for that purpose. We will eventually be back before the Select Board to request the funds to actually purchase the unit. But we can't do that yet, we're a little, it's a little premature. The purchase and sale has been drafted. The town council is working on it with, the DHCD is now the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So, we're working with them, and we've also contacted the Attorney General's Office, so that we make sure everyone's aware that the town is acting in the owner's best interest. And Executive Office Housing and Living Communities, as well as the Attorney General's Office, will also do the same. But I believe that within a few weeks, we should have a maximum resale price, and we should be able to make an offer with that purchase and sale.
So, Margaret, and what will happen with the, the owner of the property?
So, the owner of the property has expressed a desire to go to Maple Woods. And they have filled out an application, where we know that their application has been accepted. If the trust purchases the house prior to this person getting into Maple Woods, the, the agreement, the sales agreement will include language that the owner can stay in the house for a certain amount of time, until they get a suitable housing.
Thank you. Any other questions?
On the appraisal request, there's two different things, right?
Right, right.
So, on the appraisal request, or the purchase? We have the draft purchase and sale in the packet, so I guess I'm wondering if you want comments on that, while it's in draft form tonight?
I don't believe we're looking for comments on the purchase and sale. Town council has drafted that purchase and sale. I, I think, you know, we usually let town council have the final word on whether the language is correct. And we did go over with the Affordable Housing Trust. There were a couple of things that town council needed some direction on, but at the meeting the other night, she felt confident that she had everything she needs.
Yeah, the request was evolving.
Does anyone have comments after reading it?
Yeah, the request from the Affordable Housing Trust was evolving kind of into the forty-eight hour posting window with the holiday. So, we provided more information to air on the side of caution in the case that there, the request would come also, with the request to purchase. However, at this point, they're just requesting the release of funds to proceed with the appraisal.
Okay. Thank you.
So, as the Select Board member on the Affordable Housing Trust, yeah, we worked quite diligently, and reached out, as Margaret said, to all the different agencies. So, I see this as a very big win-win, both for the town to keep the house on the affordable list, as well as to provide for one of our senior citizens in town that's in difficult straits. And I think they'll work out well for her, too. So, I think tonight, we just need the, want the motion on the appraisal money?
Yep. Under motion?
Yep.
I move to approve the Affordable Housing Trust contract with an appraiser to provide an appraisal of Two Way Dexter Lane.
Do we have an amount that we want to put in there?
I think she said six hundred.
Six hundred bucks.
Up to six hundred.
Approximately six hundred.
Approximately $600.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Gary?
Yes.
Deidre?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Diane, yes, it's a unanimous vote for the appraisal. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Margaret.
You have more to tell us?
I don't have anything else to tell you.
Oh, all right. Thank you for coming.
Till next time.
We feel better.
Thanks for having me. Good night.
Thank you. So, that was Margaret, an update, Margaret, Two Way Dexter. Down, oh, here we go, gee, initial discussion on the FY twenty-four? Draft town meeting and budget calendar? Twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Yeah, I was thinking it's the twenty-four, in FY twenty-four. All right. It's FY twenty-five.
Budget, but the town in the year twenty-four.
Town meeting, okay. Yeah, you're right, so it's the twenty-twenty-four town meeting, and the FY twenty-five budget.
Yep.
Perfect. All right, so the budget was that teeny-teeny written page with lots of dates on it. Do we want to go through that first?
Yeah, so I just, just briefly, before we start going through it, what this is, is, it's essentially an update from last year's adopted budget, I mean, excuse me, town meeting and budget schedule. The dates, we tried to update the dates of the Select Board meeting to represent the first and third Tuesdays of the month. We also identified dates, so the dates for things like the five-chair meetings, and the all-board meetings with the school committee in Hamilton, are the timeframe on which they happened last year. However, I'll gather input tonight from the board, whether, you know, they like the timing, they have conflict with the timing. And so, when I go back to Vinnie, which I've already shared this with, and Joe, and we all kind of try to coordinate with our boards, with their boards and our boards, we can, you know, I'll have input to give them. We try to hammer out dates that are gonna work for the most, most amount of people. And then, you know, with that, you guys can discuss if you saw any conflicts, or things that looked off.
Right, so, the start would be the five-chair meeting, which is on a date that I can't attend, but we don't know what the school is. I don't, did you get that date, Jeff?
I have not seen it coming.
Okay. I can't send it to you right now.
So, as that first one, is that the school's proposed date, or just...
No, these are Steve's dates.
The rollover.
These are the rollover. These are the weekday happened last year.
So, so that usually is followed by the all-member quintuple meeting, which is in the same week, so I'm hoping that maybe that can be pushed back. But I guess that's up to the school, and the, and Hamilton. And then, push comes to shove, maybe if I can't make it, then we have the vice chair, or somebody else cover.
So, that whole week is out for you?
Well, I mean, Friday, September twenty-ninth, at seven, sounds like a weird time to me.
It's a tough time.
I mean, I actually can do that time, but...
Well, it's the week of, it would be the week of, so then Monday up to Friday.
Oh, okay.
I just went forward that way.
It is a tough week, because those are, that's the week of the master plan.
It's master plan, yeah.
Meetings on Wednesday and Thursday?
Yes.
I think.
Because just from going through the process last year with them, they seemed to have weeks, you know, like the last week of September, that they did in the year before that. So, I'm expecting, anticipating that it will be, again, that will be the week they'll be looking at. But however, we do have those technical working groups, so we could probably push that first week of October, or the week before, the last week of September.
Right, so that week is tough. It's Yom Kippur on Monday, and then Wednesday we have, Wednesday, Thursday, there's those other meetings. So, ideally, the following week would work better for me, because the week before is probably too soon for them to get going.
Well, the, though I might add, having done it last year, the week before might be a possibility from the school's perspective, as the initial five-chairs meeting is more of just an overview.
Overview.
You know, here's, here's our plan for the schedules, and so forth, so... It's not really tied to any particular time.
But, so those meetings aside, your goal is to get that budget letter and guidelines to the department heads. You already sent the budget letter, though.
Yep, there you have it, in the forms, go out next week. Yeah, so that's already, that was sent to, that was sent to the school committee, the finance committee, obviously, you guys, and then all the department heads.
And with the templates and everything, they all went out?
Templates go out next week.
Right, okay.
Middle of September.
So, we could just put those dates up first. CPC, it's nice to have them in there, but do we need to know all those dates? Do we...
Well, the, I mean, for this calendar, I mean, we can have spin out separate calendars, if we, maybe we can use the sorting. But this is really just so we know, these are all the meetings that have to take place leading up to, so to make sure that nobody is falling behind, like CPC, you know, make sure they're having their kickoff meeting early enough, that they have enough time to meet four or five times between then and middle of January.
You know, with new leadership there.
Everybody on track. Like, this will go, once, like, once first few, then it's gonna go out to all the boards and committees, and then what's gonna be a culmination of everybody's feedback, and getting dates, you know, that aren't stepping on each other's toes, or conflicting with members that are on two, two boards, and just so all the meetings are set in stone and take place before our meeting.
Yeah, it's great.
We have the votes in place, and the warrants, you know, so the warrant has to go to print, and we, you know, so a lot of stuff that has to happen.
Right, so October seventeenth, you have down a Select Board, but yet earlier, we decided we were gonna meet on the tenth and the twenty-fourth, although we weren't all together. You still want to have the seventeenth? We're gonna do three meetings in October?
Yeah, I think for the Select Board meetings, we can, you know, they're in, they're fluid in this. It's really just getting them on there. So, like, for example, the, I mean, if you don't mind me not being there, you can meet still on October...
On the third and the...
Third.
Ten, or the third and the seventeenth, but that's... Or the 3rd and the 17th, but that's, but it would be better for you to do the 10th and the 24th?
Yeah, I mean, and October's a five-week month, so it would still keep the board on there every other week.
Okay.
Schedule.
So just in here, instead of the 17th, you want us to meet, will we do the draft on the October 10th or October 24th?
We'll do it on the 10th.
Okay. Is anybody looking at any difficulties through those months? November 7th or October 10th, October 24th, November 7th, November 21st?
It's okay to keep some on the two-week schedule.
Yep. And so the, the assessors need to know that the tax classification hearing is going to be on November 21st? Because they have to have their stuff ready.
Yep, I've already, yeah, so we've already communicated. It's right now, it's tentatively November 21st, possibly the first week of December. But I know we've had some good status updates out of the assessor's office as far as how the revale is going, so.
Good, good set?
Yeah, good, yeah, so what, what was, you know, we were sweating at maybe having to go to the middle of December now, is backed into towards the end of November, which is, that's a good time. I think there's plenty of time for the billing and the submission of the tax recap and things.
Right.
Prior to the first of the year.
November 29th is the Wednesday after Thanksgiving, right? For the all-member board, quintuple board, is that right? The 29th after Thanksgiving?
Yes.
Yep. And then December is 12/5 and 12/19. So I like that the Affordable Housing Trust is working on a zoning bylaw change to bring to the planning board, right, to put on the, that's, that's great. So Planning Board's got their meeting in there. And the big Saturday, December 9th. Saturday, December 9th is the all-day budget day. We usually start in the morning and Steve will put out a schedule, all the departments will come and present to the FinCom and the Select Board. A little bit of roundtable discussion, bagels usually. So try to put that in your calendars. And then it looks like the FinCom meets weekly almost, starting in December.
Yeah, that's what they did last week, but, so Jeff will convene with his group, probably...
And check the dates, do all the dates.
Well, check the dates, but also set their, their preferred meeting schedule.
Yep.
And we suggested that maybe we go second and fourth Tuesdays to, up Steve's group, year first and third, because it's already, this is staff here apparently on Tuesdays, opposed to us on Wednesdays, or last year.
Yeah, to run the Zoom meetings.
So you're changing the day and then just go the opposite day to ours?
That's the thought.
Opposite week.
Particularly with, until we get a Finance Director on board, just so if I have an overlapping meeting, we can provide, someone else can provide technology, because I'd be sitting, I'll be sitting in on the Finance Committee meetings.
And are you doing, is the FinCom meeting remotely, or are they in hybrid for the most part?
We've only done it once since we've been reconstituted, and it was remote.
It was remote.
But we foresee at some point, we want to be collecting in person.
Yeah.
Since we've been five and not met in person, so it just seemed like we needed to get a meeting off, and the easiest thing to do was to do it.
Right.
We have some members that travel, but my hope that we can start meeting in person as long as there's a room, is a way for us to record meetings.
Right. And there's always that hybrid or Zoom in case someone has to travel?
Right.
So that will work. Good.
If we're meeting Tuesday, the second and fourth, year first and third, this room is available, then that would...
Perfect. That's a clever idea. So truth be told, I only went through 2023, I didn't look into 2024 calendar yet, because I didn't want to turn the page. Has anyone else had any issues, anything going on then? It just looked like it was so far away, I couldn't really imagine. Oh, I did, no, I take that back. I did have one comment on the, the Select Board meeting after town meeting, where you do kind of a recap. We have it sort of as April 10th, like the Wednesday after town meeting. But that's the day before the election, which would mean this room isn't available, because it would be set up for the election, so I recommend that we just do it on the Tuesday.
Sounds good to me.
The Tuesday, it would be April 9th. And then it would be, that would be my only other comment on those so far. Anybody have anything else? Gary?
In past years, we've always had difficulty getting some of the more remote committees and the boards involved, so perhaps if we, in your letter and so forth, that we actually set a deadline date for budget submissions that goes on the calendar.
Okay.
Just a general, you know, get your numbers in by this date, because you know, we always...
For your budget? For the, for the committees and stuff that have a budget?
Yes, yep. Because in the past, you know, we've had some committees come in after the fact, go, hey, where's my line?
Right, yep. Yeah, fair, fair point.
Where's your paperwork?
Is, um...
A few times.
You made me think of something. So town report, I don't see, is that in here at all? Because that's the other thing, we want to reach out to all the committees and departments that we need their annual report, usually at a certain time, so we get the town report put together.
Yeah, we're going to have the town report.
Yeah. Because I see committee and boards articles.
Who's writing that this year?
Michelle didn't also just...
Is it me, I'm doing it again?
Oh, fair.
Oh, the letter, the Select Board letter?
Yeah, so, uh...
Not the town report.
Yeah, so I did it, then Peter picked it up, so maybe someone else on the board would like to, uh, ask Michelle.
It's actually fascinating to do.
This is like the Select Board letter, what's gone on over the last year.
No, it's, well, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
But also to help Michelle in the total, putting together the total report as well.
Yeah.
So you just go through all the, all the minutes, just crunk through all the minutes? That's how I did it.
In writing the Select Board report?
Yes.
So writing the Select Board portion, but then reviewing and collating the whole report?
That's, Michelle does the whole, coordinating with departments, the submission.
Summarizes the, the whole year of the Select Board letter.
If you'd like to see...
So there's two things going on, though.
Yeah, there's two things.
Yeah, because you're saying two things, but I don't, so one is writing the, the Select Board letter, or the recap of the year, and then the other is to be the proofreader for the, for the report.
And then Michelle, you kind of ride herd on the other committee heads to get their reports in?
Yes. Yeah, so I send out the email, you know, asking whether you're part of a deadline date.
Right.
She cracks the web.
Yes.
Get him in, get him in. So yeah, so we should probably add those dates to here.
Okay, sure.
On when you want to remind people about that, and when you want to get all that stuff in, and then we can talk, you know, next time about who's going to do the Select Board report.
And it's usually happening where?
January.
So, uh...
January-ish?
Yeah.
Okay. Usually we want to get it done before we even send the warrant out, right, because annual town report takes longer.
Yeah, well, it certainly did this year, because we tried to save some money and go with like a competitive publisher, like a process where, like, it was a competitive bid through Staples to get a better price and not have to do, was it 500 copies is the minimum?
I forget.
Or 100 copies, but anyways, to be able to do a piecemeal for, you know, because we only have, we generally have boxes of these reports that we pay money, a lot of money for in color, and will only distribute maybe 15 to 30 copies.
Thirty, yeah.
So we're trying to buy just 30 copies and do it, and it turned into be a disaster. They kept, they'd accept the bid, and then the place would just fall off, they just wouldn't do the work. And Staples is like, oh, the agreements between you and the vendor, so then you get like another vendor, and then they wouldn't, it's like the same story.
So you're not going that route again?
No. I was like, I'll take the blame on that, because that was my good idea. I was like, oh, we'll do, I've done these tables before, it was a great experience. It was cheaper and awesome.
That sounds like fun. Budget and town meeting documents. Anything else we can think of?
I think once this gets out, you know, if there are parties who are like, hey, what about us, or what about this, what about that? So it'll be fine-tuned.
Right, because it has to go to the School Committee, FinComs, all that.
Yeah, and unfortunately, it always ends up, you know, all these, it's like board specific dates are to the Select Board's availability, but sometimes it just ends up boiling down to who's, you know, what date is the most of people available for? Because it's just coordinating, you know, like the all-boards meeting, you have two full Select Boards, two full FinComs, School Committee, Superintendent, their Finance Director, our Finance, so it's a lot of people in one meeting.
Right.
To find one date that works for everybody can be difficult.
Not so easy, that's for sure.
Impossible.
I think it's a good start, for sure, and it's great that it's, you know, September, and we're talking about this, so it's really good.
Yeah, we're about a month ahead of last year.
Yeah. Let's keep it that way. That's awesome. All right, anything else on the budget stuff? I got to go back to the agenda.
Moving on to the budget.
So we're talking draft town meeting and budget calendar. Nothing else about town meeting? We started talking about any articles that are going to go in the town meeting, or you want to wait for that?
Yeah, I think we should wait on it.
Okay.
So this, the budget request, if you move in agenda items, is, so just, it's just an open discussion. Gary, it's an email, it's in the packet for Public View, and looking for spending priorities I don't anticipate us coming up with.
So we jumped down to G.
Oh, I thought you were moving on when you said budget.
I was, I was, but we moved down to J.
Okay, what's the next, my bad.
No, we, let's go to J, and then we'll go back up to the, to the iron rail stuff. So budget priorities, you were, what budget priorities do we have as a group, as a board?
Yep. Yeah, so the question had come up maybe two or three meetings ago, that when does the board give input on what they, you know, would like to see happen this year? And so this is the first meeting of those, so it probably, it's probably going to be on at least the next three Select Board meetings, but at least we can have some general discussion tonight. I can then reduce that to writing prior to the next meeting, so we have a working list, and then it'll probably be a series of prioritizing exercises to whittle it down to, you know, a top couple, at least, so that, you know, we're acknowledging that there likely won't be a ton of extra capacity, if any, and then the talks of how, you know, how, how highly you prioritize these items, and do you want to try to explore other funding avenues.
Right, so let's, let's scoot down Gary's list, because that's the list that we have available to us, which I thought was great, because I didn't put one together.
Can I introduce it first?
Yes, please introduce it, yeah, thank you.
So I think just background, I found in past years that sometimes the Select Board, as we get rushed, as we get closer and closer to decision time, that we probably do not have full background on some of the big ticket items or big issues. And I think that if we, upfront here, as we're at the early part of the budget seizing, if we can decide what our priorities might be and where we feel we need more information on now before we get too deep into the system. So this is a mix here of both proposed briefings or areas of interest, as well as purchases, you might say.
So, which I, I thought was great. Like, so the status report on West Winham, status report on the Fields, a status report on Cutler, which we sort of got a little one today, the ARPA funds, I think are awesome, and I think we just need to invite those, those groups here to give us information on that, right? Because those are going to...
And then some of the others that might be pretty detailed is, you know, before having it presented to us at a final meeting, that we really need background on what is the firing range hazmat cleanup process?
I was just going to ask, where did that come from? What is that?
So the, the fire station downstairs used to be the police station, and there's a firing range down there.
Underneath, really?
Yes. So all through the 50s to 70s, probably, it was the police qualification range used constantly, but now you have a lot of lead that needs to be cleaned up, and it's going to come with a pretty substantial price tag. So something like that, we need to look at the options and decide where that goes in the schedule, as opposed to, you know, we've already talked a little bit about the whole waste disposal problem.
Yeah, that has to be...
It's going to be the thing that's going to take some studying. And, you know, when Tom Younger came in here, he took the lark around from his 40 years of experience and said, hey, you know, what are you doing about painting the buildings and cleaning the carpets? That's something that you got to put on a regular schedule. So we, we started that process with looking at the HVAC in the Town Hall this year on ARPA, but there's other things that we really need to start laying out for the next five years or so.
So would those kind of things be more like a capital, like putting, or it's a maintenance, a maintenance schedule?
Yeah, yeah.
Really, it has to be on a maintenance schedule, right? Yeah, the waste disposal, is that contract coming up?
Yeah, FY '26, it appears, excuse me, I was just looking at it today.
So it's not going to...
Yeah, it won't affect this...
This year, but...
But we're going to, we're starting the workups for cost estimation. So I've spoken with Castella. So they're pulling together all our current tonnage in their actual costs versus contractual costs, and we're trying to work up some sort of an estimate on where, right, obviously there's going to be a negotiation and all that probably, but, you know, to give it kind of, give at least a platform to start with the analysis as to what, what are estimated, what do we think it's going to cost us in two years, and what, where we're going to raise the money, is it going to go up 50%, 70%? Pay to throw, whatever, you know, probably be a few different scenarios.
Right.
Funding mechanisms for them.
It's good to hear that it's not next year.
Yes.
But still something to get started on, for sure. And then so that, besides the maintenance, then, you know, the DPW street paving, I'm sure, sure Rich has that, could present that, he's good at that, and sidewalks and roadside, I think Rich has all that probably in his maintenance calendar schedule.
Well, some of that, I think, especially on the sidewalks, you know, we use ARPA money to lay in some of the ADA compliant corners.
Yep.
But if you look, you know, that's running what, about $5,000 a corner? So we're never going to be able to...
Get them all.
Do the whole town. So I think we're looking at this, we need a plan that perhaps does the high priority route, library to school to center of town, that covers most of the walking kids, but then we've got to look at the legal differentiation between, you know, what is a legal sidewalk versus what we can just leave as a roadside path, and those won't, they'll be maintained, but we won't upgrade.
Mm-hmm. Back to the hazmat, did someone bring that up? Has that always been, I, I've never heard that we need to clean up down there.
It's always been there.
It's always been there. It's an issue.
Yeah, it was brought up last year, not to the board at my knowledge, but it was, it's on the five-year capital improvement in one of the out years, just because everyone's kind of not sure what to do with it, because it's a big ball of yarn.
So finding out what needs to be done, or the different options?
It's going to keep growing.
Yeah.
Or possible grants, right?
Yep.
Ambulance purchase, considering current long lead time for delivery, or have we looked into the cost benefits of having our own ambulance? Have we talked, would that be something we'd want to talk about?
We're hard to work on, but that's, I just put that in because Jeff said, we're looking at, you know, our current ambulance is doing well, but lead times on procurement is running about two years. So if, you know, if we put in this year's budget, which means late next year, we might order one, delivery will be two years beyond that.
But we want to look at, at the cost effectiveness, right? Is that, is that in your plan as well? Is that, is that in your plan as well, like, is it worth it to have it, or to, lots of, lots of places don't have an ambulance, right? Personnel organization of the fire department, that's a big one. I think we gotta talk about that. Renewable energy source for municipal energy, that's being green, right? Making a plan on how to go greener.
Well, you know, that works into the iron rail plan perhaps, and our master plan, as to eventually, you know, municipal buildings are gonna have to get off of oil or gas onto electricity, so how do we do it?
How do we do it? I thought you were coming with the answers. Solar field or something? What do you, pre-approved by AT, uh, bond authority for land purchases, we can do that?
So Ipswich has done that, right?
Yeah.
That, you know, we know, right now, we've got a couple of big-
Properties that might be coming up.
So that, uh, you know, one way to speed up the decisions, or take away kind of the crunch on that, is to have town meeting pre-approve bonds for that purpose. That they're on-the-shelf bonds, that you go, ooh, the property's coming up, instead of incurring the cost of a extra special town meeting.
Special town meeting.
You just take the bonds off the shelf and go, yeah, we can go ahead and go forward with this purchase.
That's a great idea. I don't know exactly how you do that. And then, so you also wanted to hear about the alternative for Pingree Park, the tennis court area, the trees, the plan for the trees, and recognition of frontline workers during pandemic, just to talk about that, what we would, might wanna do.
If you remember, we, uh, that was on the ARPA list. And I think there's an expectation from, uh, those departments that, uh, there's so much talk about that, and they saw all the towns, that it's, uh, if it didn't make the ARPA list, that perhaps it's, uh, something for appropriation sponsored by the select board at town meeting.
All right. Anyone have any other comments on this? That's a big list. Deirdre?
So I appreciate the list, I think it's helpful. But I think, I think for next steps, because it's a combination of things, right? Some of them are specific, potentially, specific requests from select board. Some of them are capital, some of them are more just updates and background information. So I think, I think maybe Steve and Diane, you need to parse the list as a next step to figure out what, who needs to come to give some of these background briefings. And then we get to a list, because I didn't know we were starting a list of select board sort of potential budget requests, but I think-
Thoughts, I think we were just-
This is a very initial, like, the list was just something Gary put together.
Right, so I'm saying now, next parse it.
Yep.
What are briefings, what are part of capital budget, what is potentially a select board list that then we add to, and then whittle down? But so we can start the process of getting briefed on the various things.
Yeah, no, I think it was a, is a great start, Gary, to make, get us all kind of in that mode of thinking what, what will be coming on, what we need to think about, what we need to bring on, to understand, um, the costs that might be coming through. Awesome. Anything else? Okay, so Steve and I, we can work on that?
Yep.
Thank you. Now, let's go backwards to eight.
Sorry.
That's okay.
You said FY twenty-five budget, I jumped up.
Um, that's right. Discussion and potential vote to send a postcard to all residents notifying them of the next Iron Rail Best Use Study Outreach Meeting, which is set for Monday, October second, um, at Bukeur School at six. That's gonna be televised, too?
I believe, yes.
Okay.
It should be.
Yeah, so that's the reason why we selected the Bukeur School over the library, was because, uh, H W Cam said that, well, he went and did a special inspection for us over at the library, and he said that this, the equipment that's set up already at, at Bukeur is, it's much more straightforward to have it recorded.
So-
And also just sound in the, you know, so that people talking can hear, be heard at home, can be heard in the auditorium. So there's a lot going on over there.
So I'm gonna assume that that's not gonna include a Zoom. People can either watch it or attend in person. That, so we don't have any other-
Good.
Static. Um, so the postcard is in our packet. It looks nice. Iron Rail Best Use Study.
In addition, as part of the postcard, there'll be a small survey, which is also in your packet, to, that will be linked off the website. Be Survey Monkey.
Right, so all those questions are very similar to some of the questions that we had for the West Winham Outreach.
So it's just another data, more data points.
Yep.
Yep.
I think that's great.
Go to every household in town.
Is, um, Dodson and Flinker taking any additional feedback on the survey questions, or is this kind of?
No, they are taking additional feedback. Yeah, so we want some feedback, yeah.
Yeah, are we doing that?
The choice, the choice was, right, so that was, the decision was to, to link the survey on the postcard, but then we would be limited to the feedback, so like, well, we'll link it off the web, like the postcard to the website, it will link the survey up, you know, the link.
Right.
So then we can have, it buys us basically this meeting.
More space.
To, you know, we wanna hopefully get it out there by the beginning of next week, but this meeting will give you the feedback. Because we've already coordinated with the vendor, like, for the mailing of it, so they're waiting for us to pull the trigger tomorrow morning.
So I think I just got lost for a second, because it was too much at once. For one, we're gonna have the meeting in person, on TV, at the Bukeur. It's larger, it's better audio. Will the Dobson and Flinker be there as well?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll be-
And then, so the postcard's going out, every household is gonna get it. On that will also be the link for the survey, which will go right through the website. And so, was your question, Ben, did the Dobson and Flinker help us with the questions?
No.
Are they just gonna take the answers?
Yeah, I was kind of jumping too quickly over to the cer- to the survey. So the, in the packet, we have a list of the survey questions that Dodson and Flinker put together. And I thought of a couple others that I thought might be good
Oh.
to put on the survey, and was just asking Steve whether it was still a draft, and he said it is.
We want the feedback.
And the postcard.
Sure, if you want, yeah, nothing's set in stone, so if you guys have changes that you wanna have us make, we will make them.
Now.
Now. Well, you can do the postcard now, or the survey, it's into Diane, whatever.
Yeah.
Whatever word you wanna take it.
What the next question was, so what, what do you think of the postcard? I was just reading it.
The postcard, it's just minor, but, um, because I think the postcard is a great idea. But it just says, the town is conducting a best use study to ensure that the property's use. I'm just thinking future use, so it's clear that this is like planning exercise, looking forward, or potential.
Potential, potential use.
Property's potential use.
With the best interest of the community.
How about property's potential long-term use?
Potential long-term use. Nice.
And then the next paragraph, it's just, design is repeated multiple times, so I would, instead of saying, design, design, design.
It's an interactive envisioning workshop, you don't need design in the first one.
With experts on a participatory, in a, in a participatory design process.
Attendees will have the chance to work with-
So we could just do experts, right?
Yeah, right.
So we're not really working with them, we're gonna talk with them. Right? Share feedback with them. Attendees will have a chance to share feedback with the experts on a participatory process to explore possible uses of the iron rail property.
That they'll have a chance to, sort of striking work with and add, provide.
Give feedback.
Give feedback to experts.
Share feedback, give feedback.
Share feedback, yeah.
On a participatory process, strike design.
In a participatory process, right?
In, in a-
They're gonna be in the process?
On it.
On it.
Participatory process to explore possible uses of the iron rail property. That's awesome, because you have possible there, we had potential on the top, first paragraph. Please plan on attending.
Good.
Please plan on attending to participate in the discussion, and let your voice be heard.
About, um, putting the word feasibility in here, I don't, I don't know if that distorts the purpose of what Dodson and Flinker is doing, but I, I think of it and have, have described it since some, some folks who have talked to me about it as really more of a feasibility study. I mean, it's best use, but it's also a feasibility study. What, it's not so much about what, um, should be developed there, um, if anything, but what can, what could be developed there.
So maybe in the first sentence, they're, the town is conducting a feasibility study. I mean, that's the title of it now.
Yeah, so I mean, I will say that the original title of the project was the Iron Use Feasibility Study. And at the initial public hearing, feasibility was frowned upon in the Iron Rail, uh, committee. I don't know if it voted, but then asked if we could change it to something like, uh, best use study, or alternative use study.
They didn't like the idea of feasibility.
Okay. That's why, oh, feasibility has been dropped.
All right, that's why, I'm glad I, I'm glad you said-
Helpful tonight.
Yeah, but I agree, it was, that was the original-
Yeah.
Title.
So I don't think in the-
I withdraw my-
In, at the first sentence, the town is conducting a study. We don't need to say best use a second time.
Well, it's called a best-
But it says, it's titled that. The postcard's titled that, so you don't need to say it again in the first sentence.
That's true, yeah.
Right? So the Iron Rail Best Use Study Public Outreach Workshop, Bukeur Elementary School, blah, blah, blah. The town is conducting a study to ensure that, that the property's potential long-term use aligns with the best interest of the community. This is an interactive visioning workshop. Attendees will have a chance to share feedback with experts on, in a participatory process to explore possible uses of the iron rail property. Please plan on attending to participate and let your voice be heard. Yeah, get rid of, in the discussion. I, sorry, I didn't ask anybody.
Sounds good.
Sometimes I'll just read things and make sense. Please complete the online survey. Your opinion matters, let your voice be heard.
Yeah.
That's awesome. I like, I like the blue and gold. Question wise-
It's Michelle's artistic ability.
Question wise, what, um, what were you thinking that they were missing?
Well, um, I was jotting down some notes, because I, I'm struggling a little bit to ask the questions succinctly in a survey, but what I have in mind is maybe some kind of a question that says something like, if you utilize any of the businesses or services in any of the iron ra- iron rail buildings, to what extent is convenience of location a factor in your choice? Although I'm not sure that's the right wording. And then to what extent is quality and functionality of the facilities a factor in your choice? So I'm trying to get at is, people go there, they use the gymnastics, they love the gymnastics, they bring their dogs there, they, they love that. Um, but to what extent is it the convenience of the location to those customers that's a driving factor for them? And then separately, to what extent is the quality and function of the facilities a factor? Because I think it'd be interesting for us to know if people basically said, well, no, I, you know, no, the functionality of the facility is, is poor, and that's not a factor, um, of why I patronize that business. Or the, you know, the convenience of location, that's a huge factor. So I don't know, that's, that's sort of what I've been thinking about, but I don't know whether, it'd have to be like, kind of on a one to five scale, which some of these are. So it could be, you know, one being, it's not a factor, convenience or quality of the facilities. Five is, it's a huge factor. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and then the second one, so like, if you answered yes to the one above it, you know, so one of the options could be, like, didn't answer.
Yeah.
You know, so they could be like, we don't use it at all, so then therefore their opinion on the second one would-
Right, right. And I, the reason I said the buildings is I think that, um, soccer is a different thing, and a different discussion. But when I think about the buildings, the scout building and the historic, you know, building, and some of the limitations, perhaps that those structures have, um, to try to flesh some of that out, might be useful. So-
Good questions.
There we go, yeah, that's good.
So I can write those up a little bit more coherently.
Yeah, if you want to, but we can re-watch, so like about the recordings.
Why do you go to the iron rail property, select all that apply, so then if you do K, never go, then you can skip the next one, right?
Yes, right, right. Yeah, it would, it would go there.
Just have one, an option, yeah, like an option says NA.
Yeah.
So we'll have the data.
And are there any other, other than trying to flesh out a little bit the importance of convenience of location, and the importance or non-importance of quality of, of the facilities, is there any other, um, factor that we would wanna ask people about?
Why, why they go?
I can't think of any, but.
What'd you say, either convenience or what?
Convenience of the location and the quality of the facilities.
Well, what, what about the quality of the-
Of the actual vendors.
Yeah, so, like, you know, not just the-
I, I, I don't think that's a bad idea, but I think the two that I've identified, to me anyway, are trying to kind of draw out how critical is the iron rail location-
Location.
Yeah, to the services and the businesses that people are patronizing.
That's a good idea. It could bring a whole different, I mean, it would just bring up some things like, I go there, but I don't like this, or I don't go there because of that.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Or maybe, I would just, it could indicate that they really like the location, and they really value the services, however, the facilities are poor. So you could replace what's there with something-
I think the quality question is really-
Include more.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, more than what we can accommodate there currently, without drop, without losing services, I guess.
Right, and I think you're right, the buildings as opposed to the fields.
Right.
Yeah.
And I, I, you know, the reason we're doing these surveys is obviously because, is we want people's feedback. And we don't have any preconceived notions of what people will say in response. But it's conceivable that we might get feedback that people say, yeah, I love the gymnastics program, but if it were over the line in Beverly, you know, don't, no one attack me for being anti-Winham here, but if we're over the line in Beverly, like, we'd still go there. Like, that's not a huge factor, the fact that it's there, you know, specifically within Winham. Uh, I don't know that, that that would be a feeling that we would get from the respondents, but I think it's worth trying to flesh those kinds of sentiments out.
So are you gonna work with Steve as far as sending that back to?
Yeah, I'll have two, two additional questions, and I'll write up there.
So are we up for, uh, sending out a postcard?
Definitely. So that's gonna go out as soon as tomorrow?
Yes.
So we just need to get this done within a couple of days.
Yeah, also quick, because the, the idea is to buy us a few days to work with the consultants with the, uh, the questions. Because this, let's say, after the postcard, the tree gets pulled tomorrow, it goes in the mail, they probably gonna need a few days. And then it'll be a few days before it gets to the folks' house, at which point we wanna have that link live. Like, we don't want people getting the postcard and not have a live link available
Right, right.
For them to click and take the poll.
And this would be the one time that the postage, the, the post office goes fast and people get it before we're ready. Yeah.
I figure we have only a handful of days, really.
Do you want a motion?
No, hold on. I still have comments.
Oh, what about the?
The questions.
Postcard?
No.
Oh.
We did, we're done with postcard, right?
No, we haven't actually voted on it.
Do we need to vote?
Yeah, it's gonna be, you're appropriating money.
Yeah, but let's, let's keep going with the questions and just get the whole thing fleshed out.
My comments are on the questions, not, okay. Um, they're not numbered, but the, the one that says, why do you go to iron rail property? So one of the responses says, business with the Department of Public Works. I'm just not sure that that, people, everyone necessarily knows what that means or encompasses. So maybe in parentheses, put DPW, including trash recycling,
It's first Saturday of the month.
Pickup, rain barrel, you know, like, uh, just some examples. So it's like, oh, oh, yeah, I went there to get my rain barrel.
What do we call it, first Saturday of the month, is that electronics day?
Just enough so it's recognizable.
Yeah, e-waste.
What that business with Public Works is, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And then the next question, I sort of was like, wait, what is this asking? This is asking in general, right, about town properties, not specifically iron rail? It wasn't totally clear to me.
Yeah, no, I think it's in general.
So I would just add that, what do you feel should be the town's general priori- general priorities, or just priorities for town and property in general?
Not specific to the iron rail.
Not specific to iron rail.
You can say not specific, because everything else is iron rail.
Exactly, and so it kind of threw me off. Thank you. And then the next-
Opinion, prefer not to say.
You always have to have that. The next one, where it gives these options for which of these most closely describes what you wanna see happen at iron rail. But I felt like there wasn't a good sort of mixed use. But I felt like there wasn't a good sort of mixed-use option. It was sort of like, we want this, or that, or that, or that, but maybe, maybe we want sort of mixed use of housing plus retail plus open space at this pla- you know what I mean? Like, there's no mixture of things.